Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this regular board meeting of the Fargo Board of Education. We do have an agenda in front of us, but I would like to make a couple of statements, kind of a preamble, if you will, before we begin the meeting. Things have been happening at a dizzying pace over the last couple of weeks, and so plans changed even from 3:00 today. So, I know a lot of our friends are watching this board meeting carefully at an establishment in North Fargo, and so shout out to you. Thank you for joining us. But I was planning to offer an amendment to tonight's agenda regarding graduation ceremonies, but I do want to take the opportunity to think it's important to note, and I assume everybody else would love nothing more than a ceremony in which everyone that wanted to could attend. We can relate to parents' justifiable frustration because we all are parents ourselves, and one board member even has a child graduating this year. Second, I want to thank those who have reached out to board members in very constructive ways. I tried to reply to all the emails in a timely manner, so please forgive me if I missed any from today while I was at work. I do want to talk about how agenda items are typically brought to the board, and I want to take this opportunity to do so. Typically, items that are brought to the agenda are brought through the governance committee, but these times are not typical, and this item is time-sensitive. I studied, over the weekend, meeting notice requirements, board policy, parliamentary procedures, to find the proper method of adding a topic of graduation ceremonies and emergency item to tonight's agenda. However, our plans have changed due to some news that we received today. So, I will not ask for an amendment to the agenda, and will ask that Superintendent Gandhi continues with his report on graduation ceremonies during his regular agenda item, and that will give him an opportunity to share that timeline of events, so we in the community can learn how he arrived at his decisions, and it will also allow time for board members to ask questions. So therefore, I'm asking we keep the agenda as it is and hang tight. I wish I could say more. So we do have an HR addendum in front of us, so I would entertain a motion.
I move to accept the agenda as listed with the HR addendum.
Seconded.
Okay. Any discussion on the agenda as presented? All in favor, please vote by saying yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Any opposed, no. Okay, we will proceed with the agenda as it is written with the HR addendum. Thank you. Next item is staff reports. We have President Mastrood hiding back in the corner, socially distanced far away. Welcome. So nice to see you in person.
Make sure I don't touch anything so I don't have to sanitize afterwards. So, nice seeing you guys all in person as well. This is definitely an interesting time for sure, as we've all been experiencing this, and this being the last week of school. I know it's extremely difficult for families, and for students, and for teachers as we close up classrooms, and I know there's a lot of mourning going on because we're in the classroom seeing that last date in March, and it's causing a lot of emotional trauma for our teachers, so they're excited. There's lots of reverse parades planned, and lots of passing out of materials, and I, you know, really am excited to hear the teachers end in a closing in a positive way. One of the things that's been really good that's happened is President Nelson and Superintendent Gandhi helped us do a FEIA retirement video honoring the over 600-plus years of dedicated service that we were able to put out to honor those people. They were originally going to come and help speak at our big party, but we had to cancel that due to COVID. So, thank you so much for helping me do that with the PR committee. I'm an eighth-grade middle school teacher, and at the end of every year school year, I always say, "Hey, eighth graders, what would you give as advice to incoming sixth graders? What are you looking forward to as you go to high school?" And I always say, you know, "Share these feelings and write down your thoughts." This has been an interesting year, and the fact that they were giving me so many different answers. Normally, it's stay away from so-and-so on second floor, or don't run in the halls. This year, it was be kind, be gracious, be courteous, do your work, don't get behind. They were just totally different encouraging messages as they long for their friendships and long for the school. Eighty-five percent of my students said they liked the regular classroom over the distance learning. Things that they're looking forward to high school? Better lunches. And here's the big part. They absolutely are looking forward to all the different opportunities that Fargo Public Schools has to offer. The clubs, the activities, the sports, the classes, the choices. So here in our community, our students see all of those opportunities, and they want to make sure that they continue to have those opportunities. So, just to let you guys know, you guys are doing the right path with that, so, thank you.
Thank you, President Mastrood. I will turn it over to Superintendent Gandhi, and before you talk about graduation ceremonies, I would like to do a little bit of an introduction.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want to go ahead?
Okay. That means you're talking about it now.
Yeah.
I think it's really important. I want to take this opportunity. I prepared a lot, and I really think this is a great opportunity for us as board members and the community to learn about board processes, so I want to take this opportunity to do this. So, I want everybody to know it's very unorthodox for board members to be involved in operational decisions, but we occasionally do when the amount of public feedback warrants it. I want everyone to know that Dr. Gandhi was doing the job the board expects him to do. He is obligated to use reasonable interpretation of board policies, and he very much has. He will explain some of these board policies during his presentation, at least I think he will. So, when he gives his presentation and overview, I would hope that we'd hold our questions until he's complete. Does that seem reasonable? Okay, thank you for entertaining me. Okay.
Sure. So...
Oops. All right. Thank you all for being here, I think. As President Nelson alluded to, for my superintendent staff update, I think I wanted to just talk about graduation. I think there are several things at play here. First and foremost, we understand that graduation is one of the most important milestones for all of our seniors as they finish their K-12 careers, and we completely understand and respect the sentiment of our parents and some of the constituents that we've gotten feedback for for the past several weeks, or since May 15th, when we made the announcement of potentially having a graduation ceremony without students being able to have guests. And really, what I wanted to do today is just talk through the series of information that we've used to make decisions, where we are today, and just talk through how fast information changes as it relates to COVID-19, and why did we make the decisions that we did as a district? So really, that's the purpose of this presentation, but just want to say that the purpose of today is not to blame anyone. I think, like I've said many times before, distance learning is not ideal. It does not replicate or duplicate instruction, and neither does some of the other restrictions that we have. Graduation ceremony that we're going to have at the end of this week, we're going to do the most that we can to make it meaningful, given the restrictions that we have, but it is never the intention of any of our staff, any individual, to limit parents or say that they are not part of that process, or any family members that want to attend. We completely recognize that, and that is our belief, that it does take a whole village to raise a child, and we have to work under the parameters and the restrictions that are given to us. So really, just wanted to start with that, and then talk through a little bit of where are we today, and how do we get there? So, on May 4th is when we decided to provide our first communication out to our community regarding graduation. At that point, we had no graduation guidance from DPI or the governor's office, and we didn't know if information was going to change. We knew that it could, so what we decided to do at that point is say that at least to honor the current graduation dates, we will host a virtual ceremony in May, and at that time, we had scheduled a end-of-July in-person celebration. We included in our communication the highlighted lines that said, "If DPI or the governor were to allow for more robust in-person graduation ceremony, we would plan for that option and explore that option and forego the July celebration." Well, like I said before, information changes quickly. So, two days later, the governor's office and DPI releases graduation guidelines that do allow school districts across the state of North Dakota to host in-person graduation ceremonies in May. We didn't think this was going to be an option two days before, but we said, "Okay, now that we have that opportunity, let's explore that option." And I think one of the questions that we received is, "Why did we change our original plan of having a virtual celebration in May and then to a July celebration, and a physical celebration in July, to an in-person celebration in May?" Well, the reason we changed is because, one, we didn't know if July was going to have any less restrictions still that we don't know now, or that we were going to be able to do more in July if we weren't. The second reason is that we do have students that would miss out on that ceremony itself because they're going to be entering the service, and they leave for basic training in June. So at that point, we got together and we said, "Okay, let's explore the options of having an in-person celebration and a ceremony in May." So the next day, on May 7th, we got together with all of our high school principals, and we asked them to develop plans, and we said, "The standard that you need to use for your plans to make sure that we can do this in-person ceremony is the North Dakota Department of Instructions Restart Graduation Guidance." And we said, "That's going to be the rubric that you need to use to develop the plans, so please come up with the appropriate graduation ceremonies." So, they were asked and given about five days to come up with a plan, and we said that we would reconvene on May 12th. On May 12th, all the high school principals shared their plans with Dr. Gross and I, and these plans allowed for two guests per graduate, and they were aligned to the North Dakota Restart Guidance. The one piece that we had to still do was work with our community health providers and make sure that the plan would meet the needs of Fargo-Cass Public Health in Sanford, and make sure that those entities, those medical organizations that are assessing the level of risk and threat associated with COVID-19 are supportive of our plans, or at least were in following their recommendations as well. During the same time when our principals were developing our plans, I was in touch with West Fargo Public Schools. West Fargo Public Schools is partnering with Assentia, and we as an organization traditionally partner with Sanford. Assentia at that point had and continues to share with West Fargo Public Schools that they strongly recommended not having any guests at the graduation ceremony, that they were already nervous with the congregation of just the amount of students themselves. So that was a piece of information that West Fargo had shared with us. At that time, I told them that although we try to be aligned as school districts together, our decision-making factor was going to be based on the guidance and recommendations that we received from both Sanford and from Fargo-Cass Public Health. So I said, "Let me reach out to them and see what they say regarding the graduation plans that our principals created, and then we'll get back to you." So the next day, we had shared our plans with both agencies. This was the initial response that we received from Sanford, which, as you'll see kind of from that first bullet, Sanford had said that their approval or us moving forward with our graduation plans, they wanted to be aligned with Fargo-Cass Public Health and make sure that we have support from them as well. So Fargo-Cass Public Health is, on May 13th, asked to review our plan, and they take a look at it, and they say, "Okay, we'll give you an email the next morning with just our recommendations." That evening, West Fargo continued to meet with Assentia. Assentia continued to push for not having any guests at their graduation ceremony. West Fargo Public Schools also reached out to Fargo-Cass Public Health just to seek their guidance and just to see if there's another agency regarding plans that they had developed, which are very similar to ours. The next morning, we received this email from Fargo-Cass Public Health, and, you know, what I've bolded here are two important things. On May 14th, they had shared with us that after looking at our plans, which allowed for two guests, that we are taking a more conservative approach with our recommendation for ceremonies and hosting large gatherings. Later, they also say that we strongly encourage you to continue to explore all of your options, whether it's a virtual ceremony, a staggered ceremony, to lessen group gatherings, or to do drive-through graduation ceremonies. Well, at that time, we took a look at, you know, their recommendation, and we just felt that an in-person ceremony was more meaningful than having a virtual or drive-through ceremony. We noticed at that time that they also said, "You should consider staggered ceremonies with lesser group gatherings." Initially, we didn't consider this, and we didn't consider this for three reasons. One is, as I'll show on the next slide, DPI guidance that was released at the time shared that multiple ceremonies in the same site was a higher risk than doing an outdoor field celebration, which is what we had originally shared in our plans with them. Secondly, I had made the assumption that if students are split up into multiple ceremonies, they won't be able to be with all of their classmates because they'll be split up, whether it's alphabetically into groups of two or three ceremonies, and that's not something that they would want to do. And lastly, part of our requirements in terms of the plans that were developed according to the DPI guidelines is to make sure that we have weather contingency plans in place. One of the biggest pieces of advice that we've gotten from our healthcare providers is that the level of risk and threat when you have large groups resulting from COVID-19 changes significantly when you go from outdoors to indoors. So when we're doing an outdoor ceremony, we want the opportunity to be able to keep pushing the ceremony back, whether it's one hours or two hours, have that flexibility with the start time as contingencies for inclement weather, before we have to do a completely virtual or indoor ceremony, which would be extremely limited, and we wouldn't be able to have group gatherings indoors at all. So, those are really the three reasons at that time why we didn't explore having a staggered ceremony with multiple people. So this was a guidance from DPI that originally allowed me to pass on doing staggered ceremonies, and as you can see, this is from the DPI graduation guidance, which says that an outdoor field graduation, the way I interpret this, is less of a risk than multiple ceremonies, which would be that staggered ceremony approach. So based on this information, on May 15th, I worked with Superintendent Sledi and West Fargo Public Schools, and both school districts communicated that based on the advice and the recommendations that we are getting from our community health partners, we would proceed with a graduation ceremony, but that would not allow or that would not be able to host any guests. From May 18th onwards, as you all know and I know, we began to receive feedback, and there's including a parent petition about changing graduation ceremonies or to be able to allow parents that opportunity to participate. Given some of the feedback and looking at some of the information that was shared with us about mixed messages or different agencies saying that this is feasible and the level of threat is not there, I reached out to both Cass Public Health and Sanford on May 19th and just said, "Hey, this is some of the information our community is getting. We know our parents are rightfully upset." As I would too, as a parent, not having that opportunity to be there. Is there something we can do? There's some information that we're getting that people are looking at the level of risk differently. Can you revisit our plans? At that time, Cass Public Health continued to tell us that follow the large group guidance, stick to around 250 people. So they've never told us not to have guests, but they have said, "We want you to stick to this guidance around 250 people," which means one ceremony without guests, or it means multiple ceremonies. Just with our class sizes, we're already exceeding 250 people, and they understood that, but there's a little bit of a difference when you're going up to potentially 300 to 320 people versus a graduation ceremony when we have two guests each, we're going to have north of 1,000 people. So that's really kind of where some of this decision-making was. So that was the position and the guidance that was shared with us on May 19th. On May 21st, Mayor Mahoney shared, I believe on the J-Ton Show, and he's reached out to me, and we've talked as well, that his personal preference from his perspective as a parent would have been to have multiple ceremonies where students are staggered by alphabet, and then that gives the parents an opportunity to come. I didn't hear it, but it was reported that Governor Burgum said that that was his personal preference as well. And then on that same day, there was also a news report from a graduation ceremony in Minnesota where one of the stage workers that was helping with the ceremony did test positive for COVID-19, and that got traced back to the graduation ceremony as well. So just a lot of different pieces of information that we're sharing with. At that time, I had reached out to Mayor Mahoney and just said, "I appreciate your personal preference," but I reminded him of the DPI guidance of, from what I've seen earlier, that the multiple ceremonies was really going to be a higher level of risk than the original plan that we had set. What he shared with me at that time is that Fargo-Cass had said, "Based on new information that they have received, they think that if you're doing it outdoors, multiple ceremonies is as safe as the original plan that we had had." So, this is kind of going back to this chart, what I'm saying. Earlier, two weeks ago, or around May 14th and May 15th, as you'll see in this chart, multiple ceremonies is a higher level of risk than an outdoor field graduation, which was our original proposal with two guests. According to Fargo-Cass Public Health and Mayor Mahoney, on May 22nd, because of updated guidance from CDC on May 20th, this is no longer a higher level of risk, and both of these are on par, assuming that the multiple ceremonies are happening outdoors. So with that additional piece of information, and given the feedback that we were receiving that maybe students do rather have guests there than have, maybe they prefer that than the opportunity to be able to graduate while their classmates, we decided to send that survey. We did send that survey at Friday at 4:00, and I know that's a point of contention, but we are working with rapidly changing information, and we sent that because we are trying to host a large-scale event, one event that's going to have north of 600, 800, or 1,000 people if we were allowing guests, so we have to be able to move quickly, and that's why we had put a 24-hour timeframe on that survey. So we emailed the students last Friday on May 22nd, just a simple question of, "Currently, are restrictions artistic as close as possible to the 250 guest limit? We know we're going to exceed that a little bit, but if that's the restriction that we're making our decisions based off of, would you prefer one ceremony with all of your classmates, or would you prefer multiple ceremonies with allowing two guests each?" It is never our goal to pin students against their parents, but that is just the reality of the information that we're dealing with and the basis of how we're making the decision. So we thought it was important to get the students' perspective and be able to share that data and make decisions accordingly. Throughout all of this, I just want to express my gratitude to all of our high school principals that continue to be flexible and nimble. It's not easy to be able to just change from one ceremony to multiple ceremonies when you're talking about the week before graduation, but they said it's important for us to do what our kids want to do and make sure that we're meeting the needs of our seniors. So I'm extremely grateful for their flexibility and even saying, "Let's move forward with that plan." So the survey closed on Saturday at 4:00. We had 429 responses out of about 650 seniors that we have in our school district. Seventy-seven percent of them said that they want, given those two choices, they would like to stick with one graduation ceremony versus having multiple ceremonies if we're still trying to stick to the guidance of 250 people for a large gathering, which was the recommendation from Fargo-Cass Public Health at the time. This was the breakdown of the data by school, so all very similar, from that 70% to 80% range in favor of current Plan 1. And it is true that if you look at the survey, Plan 1 allows you to keep pushing things back because it's one ceremony, so like I said before, you can change the start time back, whereas Plan 2, you have to more immediately, if there's a rain contingency, switch to a virtual option. That's not a threat, but that's a reality of not having the ability to keep pushing the ceremony back when you have back-to-back ceremonies scheduled, and you have to sanitize in-between as well. So those are the pieces of information that we provided to the students. Yesterday during Memorial Day, I was contacted with our student council presidents from Davies, South, and North High School. All these students are individuals I've worked with before on our superintendent's students' cabinet, and really just had a fantastic conversation, and, you know, one of the things that they shared with us is that they've been doing some of their own work in researching not only potential graduation plans, but they've reached out to a professor at NDSU that has a master's in infectious diseases, and based on his recommendation, they felt like they had a plan that would allow for a graduation ceremony to work with two guests each, and it would still be one ceremony. Well, first off, I was just absolutely blown away by our students and their initiative. My recommendation to them at that point was, going back to, we are making our decision based off some of the guidance that we received from Fargo-Cass Public Health, and I know that they're basing that off of the large group gathering guidance from DPI of 250 individuals. So very politely, the students asked, "Can we reach out to Fargo-Cass Public Health and say, 'Why are we getting mixed messages or different pieces of information from maybe a professor at NDSU versus kind of how they're assessing the level of risk and threat?'" And my advice to the students at the time was, "Seek to understand, but don't seek to advocate." You know, it's not our position to go against a public health agency that's working tirelessly around COVID-19, but let's just gain some understanding of where their position is." So they reached out, they shared their plans, which are very similar to the original plans that we had already developed for our graduation ceremonies. Today, Fargo-Cass Public Health responded to the students and to myself, and also contacted West Fargo Public Schools. And I know this is a lot in their response, so I'm going to kind of break down what was the bolded and most important piece of information. Fargo-Cass Public Health shared with us, as of about 2:30 or 3:00 today, that when we were originally contacted, we stated that the scenarios that were presented to us, and they're using the school board, but it really was myself that had been in touch with them, met the DPI guidance, but they had at that time concerns with gathering sizes based off of the state, and they wanted to stick with that 250 individuals. With that being said, on Friday, the government, the governor had lessened restrictions on the original executive order allowing for more activities, and then after careful consideration of the plans, Fargo-Cass Public Health is now supportive of us hosting one graduation ceremony and allowing two guests each. So where we are as of now is that our principals, again, got together this afternoon and said, "Well, if we have that opportunity, we will pivot again, and we are going to be able to allow two guests per graduate following some, a lot of social distancing requirements that we're going to be putting in place, such as wearing masks and other things." So I just want to express my gratitude to our principals, to Fargo-Cass Public Health for being flexible and understanding, but also just share that we make decisions based on the information that we have at the time, and when you're looking at something such as COVID-19, information changes at a very rapid rate. So I'm grateful to be able to say that, yes, we are going to move forward with the graduation ceremony, and that information's going to be communicated tomorrow, coming from each building principal themselves, but we should be able to move forward now with the blessing of Fargo-Cass Public Health to have a ceremony that allows for two guests per graduate and only have one ceremony where all of our students can graduate together. I end with just this because I know that President Nelson kind of alluded to this earlier as well, that there's been a lot of conversations recently about my role as a superintendent, and should the board direct me to change my original position had Fargo-Cass Public Health not changed it? And obviously, the board does have the right to direct the superintendent. I am your employee, and I completely understand that, but I do want to just share my concerns with, had we gone down that road as well. The executive limitation policies that you've set for me require me to interact with parents, students, and the public, and not cause or knowingly allow conditions or procedures which are unlawful or unethical, unsafe, or disrespectful, and then also knowingly, recklessly, or negligently expose a district, or its board, or staff to legal liability. And until today, at 3:00, if we had gone against the advice of our community public health advisor, I do feel like I was in a violation of both EL 3 and EL 9, and that is the genesis behind the decisions I make and how I believe the superintendent has a right to make those decisions. So that's just a little bit about graduation, where we are, and our next steps in moving forward.
Surprise? Okay, so I'm going to say a little bit of something before, because I assume that you might have some questions for Dr. Gandhi and clarifying, but I want to share an analogy for everyone's consideration. So y'all know I run a nonprofit, and I answer to a board for the nonprofit organization that I lead, just like Rupak answers to us as board members. If I were to willfully ignore the guidance given to me from a public health official, I would be looking for another job. And if my board forced me to willfully ignore the advice and guidance from a public health official, I would be looking for another job because I wouldn't work for a board like that. So I want to share that analogy because that's the position that Rupak is in, and when it's much more difficult to, for somebody who's charged with making decisions that affect others in their care, and so that's why I was very supportive of his guidance all the way through this, and so I felt compelled to share that, and I am very supportive of what you've done so far, and I am supportive of your announcement today. So, are there any questions from the floor at this point for Dr. Gandhi?
I would mimic your words in support of you, Dr. Gandhi. I think you have done the best with each piece of information. I think you have done the best with each piece of information as rapidly as it comes through the information. And so I think you've done an excellent job with that, so thank you.
I also agree with that as well. I think it's really, really hard when you hear a mayor and a governor say something completely different than what you want to hear because I was completely shocked when, you know, I had actually reached out to Mahoney myself and messaged him about it. And it just, it was just a different analogy than what I expected to get from him and then the report also too on the Jay Thomas Show that was shared as well. It was just, I don't know, I support you. And I know it's hard because every single day this COVID stuff changes, no matter what it is. And it's going to be a decision all the way through until we get through this. There's going to be tough decisions every single day that everybody has to face, whether you go back to work, whether you bring the students, whether you bring clients in your office. It's going to be absolutely a mess until everything is figured out and we actually can do something. So thank you.
And before I call on Brian, I have to say, you guys did a lot of work preparing and re-pivoting and making other directions. And I know you had, and it's this graduation ceremony still going to be streamed live because that was also a big piece.
Correct. Yeah, we are, we understand that there are students and families that, rightfully so, that might choose not to participate. We are working with, we've hired out a production company to make sure that we can provide the best livestream experience for all of our graduation ceremonies. That's going to continue. I appreciate the kind words. Really, the credit goes to our staff and our students. Their ability to stay nimble, flexible, adaptable, and understanding, given how fast information changes. It's really easy to make a decision and say, we're going to stick with it. But to pivot back and forth and back and forth and back and forth, I think there's a joke with one of our principals that puts on a graduation cap every time I get on a Zoom meeting with them. They are the ones doing all of the work, never knowing how the pendulum might swing the next day. So really grateful for all of them.
And I would say, board members are not slotted to be at these events, never were and still aren't. Is that clear?
Correct. We're still going to try to limit it to the students, the families, and the staff members that they're going to help run the ceremony, so.
I think that's good advice. Brian?
Dr. Gandhi, thank you. My wife also thanks you for running this operation this last month. And it's really the whole year. For me and my family, we've come to trust you and your decisions. We know that you have the best interests of our children at home. I get that. And I see that every day. And I get it. I get to see it even more so than the outside public because I get to be in meetings all the time. So you alluded to your staff. I agree. It takes a staff, a big staff, to get along together, but somebody's got to be leading that as well. And you guys working with the public officials, doing what's best for these seniors, our communities. We also have a nephew that's graduating in West Fargo. And I reached out to Dr. Sledi as well, thanking her that you guys are keeping our kids safe. Not to mention that you're also trying to keep the other students safe so that maybe we can start this fall. So thank you for all that you're doing, and I appreciate the nice slideshow. There's a lot of hours that went into this, so thank you.
Maybe you'll be going all the way around the room with comments tonight. But I think that if that's the case, that's appropriate. Wow, we have, we've really kind of come full circle here, haven't we? I hope that as a result of the information that you've given us, there can be some happier feelings, you know, by folks that were saddened and worried and feeling as they're being left out or that there are opportunities being taken away. But there are opportunities being taken away from everyone in this world. Funerals, births, marriages. Just so many things that everyone is being asked to reshuffle in their lives. And so many communities where no graduation ceremonies are able to be planned at all. So I hope that we all consider ourselves very fortunate to be in this position right now, even though it's still more limited than what we'd all like it to be. So I just wanted to let you know I had a motion that I had prepared for this evening. It wasn't necessarily, I guess it wasn't necessary as a result, but we knew that this might come up this evening for an addition to the agenda. So I just wanted to read this. And I talk about the Fargo Board of Education as a whole, but really, I guess now it would be my own personal statement. And it's really to reiterate the support for you and administration. And I would say our students that helped lead the effort. So how wonderful that is too, for the students to be involved. So the way I wrote this, and of course, it's not a motion, but this is the way I wrote it. "The Fargo Board of Education supports Dr. Gandhi in the development of the graduation plans for the class of 2020 as they currently stand." And now I believe those have been revised and now they've been updated. I believe my words that I crafted earlier today are still appropriate. "The superintendent has studied the guidelines set forth regarding graduation ceremonies laid out by the governor's office, as well as the North Dakota Department of Public Instruction. Dr. Gandhi has interpreted the executive limitations policies, EL 3 and EL 9, given to him by the board appropriately. Both policies in essence require the superintendent to not knowingly put parents, students, and the public at risk." That was my biggest concern regarding our plans for a ceremony is that we would not be knowingly putting our students, our administration, any of our community members at risk. So thank you for really adhering to that. "We therefore agree that it is appropriate for the superintendent to look to the district's leading health agencies, Sanford and Fargo Cass Public Health, for their guidance in the development and support of the district plans to provide graduation ceremony opportunities for the 2020 graduates of Fargo Public Schools during this unprecedented time of a global pandemic. And that we extend our congratulations to all graduates of Fargo Public Schools and wish all of them the best in their future endeavors." Thank you so much for your work.
This is getting emotional. I can only imagine the parents that are learning what they're learning right now. So should we just go around the horn? I know Jennifer had her hand up too. Go ahead. John, do you have anything you'd like to say?
I just really appreciate that the number-one concern has been for safety and security of our students, of our staff, of our families, of our community, all along, and using the best information we have when we had it and absolutely supporting our superintendent as the one to make these decisions. It is the job of the board to hire the superintendent, hire a superintendent that is ready to lead in a crisis. And I very much believe that our superintendent has done that. And so thank you very much. I would only also ask that our students and our families and our community continue to be safe during this ceremony and afterwards. And let's all come out of this healthy and safe sooner than later. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer?
So many of my comments would echo what both Rebecca and John did such a great job actually sharing with us. So I won't repeat, but a few things that I just wanted to add were really to highlight the opportunity that you took to survey students and really gather, have them included in this decision. And my second point or question really was, maybe you could take an opportunity just briefly to highlight some of the social distancing requirements that are going to be asked of those coming that will decide to attend, whether that be masks or distance or what that is going to look like for people. And then lastly, opportunities for learnings. As you've mentioned, COVID and this ever-changing, you know, from day to day, hour to hour, and distance learning and the things that we've learned along the way. This is yet another opportunity for us to take a look at, okay, moving forward, what could we do, right, in the future? And hopefully, it's not about addressing a pandemic, but something that is as emotionally charged as this. What could we do to further engage our public within the conversation to help them understand what is all gone in to those decisions and those factors? Because I really believe that the more that we can do that, the more, we are being transparent, and the more that is understood and the more questions that people feel are answered, I think the better in terms of acceptance. And so if somehow along the way, when decisions like this are happening, we can find a way to proactively share them with our community, I would encourage us to continue to try to do that moving forward.
And I would say before Rupak answers, because that was going to be one of my questions too, can you play out, host, well, look, I couldn't agree with you more, Jennifer. And really, there wouldn't have been, it wouldn't have been necessary for Rupak to give his timeline today, but this was a great opportunity for the public to understand everything that's been considered. That doesn't come to the public level, so I completely agree with you. So will you explain to us how this will look at graduation ceremony?
We are going to say masks are required for all attendees. And obviously, everyone's going to be spaced out. Our original plans require the utilization of our football fields that are three comprehensive high schools and the parking lot at Agassi for Woodrow Wilson. Since this information was just shared earlier, late this afternoon, our secondary principals are putting together some plans, so I'm going to say look out for information from them. What looks, what's happening at North might look a little bit different than what's happening at South and what's a little bit different at Davies. Our numbers are a little bit different. Our facilities are a little bit different. So it is going to be very structured. We're going to adhere to all of the social distancing requirements. I think there were a couple of contingencies or a couple of pieces of advice from Fargo Cass Public Health. And I think I just want to clarify with one thing today. It seems like this is a very therapeutic motion or moment because we are able to bring parents to a graduation ceremony. You know, it's not a matter of coming full circle. And I completely understand the emotional, how emotional of a decision this is. But this decision isn't based off of the emotions. It's based off of the guidance from Fargo Cass Public Health. If things change in the next two days, then we have to stick with that guidance too. And I know right now, it feels like we're able to get to a resolution that we all want and that we all wanted all along. But I think it is still our responsibility as leaders and as an educational organization to know that things can change. The same way that we didn't know what was going to happen at 11:00 today, we don't know what's going to happen at 11:00 tomorrow. And I just want us to be aware of that as well. So it's not a one-fail swoop. But right now, we've been told that we can move forward with this ceremony and practicing the social distancing requirements that they've asked us to do. So masks will be required. It'll be very structured. And further information will be coming from each of the buildings independently.
Is there a rain contingency plan already?
We are working on that. You know, the concern from Fargo Cass Public Health was that we have a strong Plan B because they absolutely do not recommend us having groups of that size indoors. So our rain contingency plan might be a virtual celebration, but we're going to look at seeing what does that look like.
Okay. I think those disclaimers are important. David?
As all of the board members have, I've received a lot of emails this week. And most of them have been directed at why the board hasn't become involved in this decision. I think it's important that our patrons understand the governing style of this board. We hire a superintendent to manage the district, and we monitor him or her very, very closely to assure that they're living up to the guidelines that we have given. We don't micromanage all of the decisions that are made. And I think that this is a classic example of the superintendent utilizing the people at his resources and the resources of Cass County Public Health and Sanford to make the decision that he considers the wisest. And the board is in support of that. I would be remiss if I didn't say that I have serious reservations about these gatherings. These times are totally unprecedented. We've never faced anything like this, and with God's help, we'll never have to do it again. But upon entering, before coming to the meeting today, I checked, and there have been 380,000 deaths worldwide associated, directly associated with COVID. We've never had a pandemic like this in any of our histories. And now as we start to release people into the, into public gatherings again, I'm very, very concerned that we're going to see an upsurge in those numbers. It was a very emotional decision to make. And I emphasize completely with the parents, but things are happening now that we've never had happen before. I was not able to attend the funeral of a person that I love very, very dearly and felt a terrible loss because of that. I had a grandson born three weeks ago, and I have not held him yet. I will not be attending my nephew's graduation parties. These are things that you'd never want to happen to anyone, but they are, were considered appropriate and are considered appropriate under the circumstances. I'm just hoping that the decisions that we've made turn out to be wise six months from now.
Thank you. Jim, would you like to say anything?
Excuse me. I just want to reemphasize everything David just said. Hats off to you, Rupak, for following good guidance, making good decisions. And I too have the same concerns. Pretty sure somebody, one of our students, one of our parents, one of us, could be me right now, probably is with COVID-19. So hopefully, we'll come out of this with not a spike in cases. But, excuse me. But at the end of the day, I think it's the right decision based upon the guidance we're getting from public health. And my apologies for my voice, hence the reason I'm not there.
Thank you, Jim. I could sense the emotion through the phone line. Anything else to add, Dr. Gandhi?
No, again, just want to say thank you. You know, nobody, nobody wanted to ever make a decision to deprive parents or guardians the opportunity to watch their kids get a diploma. So this isn't about Cass Public Health. They've been phenomenal to work with. Sanford has been phenomenal to work with. West Fargo Public Schools, whatever they decide. I know everyone has what's best for their kids and their families in mind. And again, I just want to express my gratitude to our students and to our building-level administrators and our staff, our teachers and everyone else, that they're going to be willing to even participate and help make sure that this graduation ceremony goes off to be the best experience it can be for our seniors.
The only better experience will be the 20th reunion of the class of 2020.
Agreed.
They will have a bond that many students haven't had before. So, okay, anything else on this topic? I know we spent a lot of time on it, but it deserved this amount of time. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, and I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on the consent agenda items? All those in favor, please vote by saying yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Any opposed? No. Okay, motion carries. We are going into a fairly meaty business section. Would the board like to continue, or would you like a restroom break? Speed it up. Okay. So item 5A on the agenda is Fargo Public Schools District Office Memo Number 112. Dr. Gandhi, would you like to make introductions?
Sure. Earlier last year, we were approached by RDO regarding the potential listing of their building, which is located right next to Hawthorne Elementary School. which is located right next to Hawthorne Elementary School. RDO is moving into Block 9, the building that's being built downtown. So their office space is potentially going to be listed down the road. And there was just a general conversation at the Board Planning Committee about would that be a potential fit for the district? Is that something they would be interested in for a variety of reasons? One is just looking at the potential growth and limitations that we have with our current district office. But then also looking at some of the things as a district that we might want to do down the road, looking at our finances and our investment into our facilities, and where do we get the most efficient usage of taxpayer dollars as well? So that conversation kind of stayed at that very high level until about the last month or so, when we were approached and said, is this something the district wants to seriously look at? So our Director of Maintenance and Operations, Blake, did three analyses. Those are what's provided with you in your board packet. One is an analysis of our current district office, limitations, challenges, potential work that we would have to put in to keep up with this building and what we need to do. One is an analysis of the RDO building. And then the third piece is an analysis on our Agassi building. And although this business item is not voting on anything regarding the Agassi building, we look at this in terms of a three-step long-term vision. Currently in our district, we house a lot of office personnel at Agassi, whether it's Fargo Public Schools employees or employees of the Fargo Public Schools Foundation or an organization that leases some of the spaces that we have there as well. And the Agassi building continues to have a lot of just different address, needs that we need to address. In fact, in our operational plan and our long-range facilities plan, this year, we were charged with coming up with a separate long-term vision just for Agassi, just because of the amount of dollars that we know that's going to take to keep up with that building. So we really looked at, is the RDO building a potential option to not only move over the district office, but to move over some of the personnel that we have at the Agassi building? And then can we create a separate, maybe, vision to decommission the Agassi building or not invest as many dollars as we are down the road by moving some of the other programs there? And then look at what could that look like for a district? So that was really the conversation that we had at a planning level. And the Planning Committee recommended to bring that to the board to vote on today. And Blake is here to talk through any of the colored, multi-page documents that you may have for his analysis that him and his team did a fantastic job on.
Robin?
Yes, Jim.
Can I make a motion just to begin the discussion here?
Would you, maybe we can have Blake give his presentation? And then I entertain a motion after that. Thank you.
Sounds fine.
Okay, so I'll start with the current district office. Now, a couple of weeks ago, we were charged with giving an assessment of this building, the RDO building, and the Agassi building. It's basically just a factual, here's what it is as it stands now. I did take our team over there from the Maintenance and Operations Department, went through it, this building. We went through the RDO building and through Agassi to basically just give you the, here's the pluses, the minuses. Here's the amount that we're going to have to spend the next couple of years. Here's everything as a package. Because this is, in looking at this as a whole, it makes sense. But in looking at it individually, it's kind of one of those things of, well, does this work without doing this? Does that work without doing that? So we just kind of put it together as a package. Our current district office right now has 35,020 square feet, 25,635 of that is usable square feet. When I say that, I mean, it's, all the usable square feet we have is offices where you're sitting right now, over there in the DIR and in the credit union. The rest of the space is warehouse space. It's not usable except for warehouse space. This was built in 1937. The additions happened in 1949 and 1995. If you go on the side of the building, you can kind of see that progression as far as how things were added on. Kind of a high-level summary of this building is that we've reached capacity at this building. There is nowhere else to go. There's no renovations we can do to create more space. There's no addition we can do because we're landlocked. We have railroad currently over here, back behind us. We have some property that's owned by another entity in town. So we really don't have anywhere to go here. Space is at a premium here. We do have a lot of issues with storage, furniture placement, those kind of things. So we've definitely done a great job over the last however many years, 10 years or so, to make sure that we are following all of the requirements that are given to us by the fire department to make sure that we're maintaining the distances between walls and the three-feet walkways and all of that. Mechanically, this building has one smaller rooftop that was replaced last year. Is it last year or the year before? Year before. The larger 10-ton unit would need to be replaced next year at a cost of $200,000. The boilers are in good condition here for the age and are well-maintained, considering the vintage. And that's just, that goes to our team, the Maintenance and Operations team itself, as far as how well they take care of the buildings. Now, there's a picture right now of a 10-ton unit there, the big white one there in the middle. That's the one that'll have to be replaced. Plumbing, plumbing in this building is in good condition. There is no major issues. But there has not been a major upgrade to the plumbing in this building in many years. Electrical systems are in good working condition. Building automation is actually working very well in this building. We do have a Siemens system in here, and it is controlled remotely. Security, we do have an upgraded security system, which is monitored remotely. We have a CCTV security system that is digital and upgraded. Card access systems are upgraded and functioning normally. Elevators, that's another issue in this building. Main elevator is maintained and original to the building. It will require a major upgrade work to the tune of about between 60,000 and 120,000, depending on if we overhaul it or if we have to replace the whole thing. We're not sure yet which one we'd have to do yet, but that's, we're leaning more towards the $120,000 replacement of that elevator. We do have a kitchen here. It is pretty well-packed, full of refrigerators and a vending machine. And we do have a lot of the amenities here. Lounge, as you can see, there's a lot of things that are placed in there. We do have a few tables in there as well. Everything is working as it should. Landscaping and grounds, there is only really one small patch of green space up here that you see. So there isn't a whole lot of landscaping that's done here. But what is there is very well taken care of. Parking lots, right now, currently, we lease space across the street here for 16,000 a year for our parking, for additional parking for us. We have 50 available spaces right here currently for our building. And if you look at this picture right here, you can see our parking. We have the parking that's in the front of the building. We have parking here that we do lease. And then we also have parking back behind the building and to the side, which is an ideal because that is the drive-up for the credit union. But we, you know, parking is at a premium here, so you park where you can. Back behind our building, that parking lot, that area is going to have to be replaced soon, the next probably two to three years. As you can see, it is crumbling. There are some issues there as far as elevations and things like that. So we'll have to end up dealing with that in the next two to three years. The building exterior shell is in decent condition. You can see some of the structural issues as far as the joints that have been added on to over the years. There are structural cracks at the base, towards the back of the building, that will eventually require attention. What that means is we'll either have to do something as far as structurally, or we'll have to do something as far as replacement of walls or something to that effect. Just kind of give you a picture of that there on the next page of that, some of those issues. Interior shell, 90% of the windows have lost their seal. We'll have to replace those out very soon. This has led to a lot of our issues with maintaining temperature in the building, those kind of things. So we have to look at replacing those out. That's about a $4,500 to $5,000 fix to be able to replace out our windows upstairs. The building is showing age. Painting will be required in the next one to two years just to maintain that, the crispness to it. But that's what causes that moisture look with the windows. So when you look at our windows upstairs, you will see it. It looks like they haven't been cleaned, but it's just because of the fact they've lost their seals. Carpet is relatively new, and in most areas, VCT tile as well. The kitchen and lower back hallways, so they're in good condition. They've been properly maintained. Lighting fixtures are outdated, multi-bulb, four-by-two grid style and contain low-level fluorescent bulbs. Recommendation would be to replace all those with LEDs, but that's going to, that would be a substantial cost. The building floor plan was originally made for a warehouse, which as you can see in here with the pillars, that's kind of the style of what it was at that point when it was remodeled. So the best thing that has been done with this building is the use of space that is here available. But unfortunately, we're out of that space currently. Furniture, I'll just kind of give you a brief of that. A lot of the furniture is older. Some of it's not made anymore, some of it is. So replacing some of it out would be difficult. The panels up there do need to be cleaned, but that's a $20,000 to $30,000 hit to be able to clean those. File cabinets aren't put away, they're out in the middle. So space is a premium up there. But the furniture is in decent shape, and I'm just trying to show you some of the differences in the furnitures there. The styles and the things that people have done, brought in their own furniture, those kind of things are just pieced-together stuff from other schools. So I just wanted you to see that. The bottom picture there is just to show you the light level in the cubicles itself. There isn't a whole lot of natural light that comes into those interior cubicles. So I just wanted to show you that with that picture. That is our lighting fixture. Bathrooms are well-maintained, the color of the tile. You can kind of tell the age by the color of the tile. The lighting is ample. Everything is actually in good working order in our bathrooms. The roof is in relatively good condition with many years left before we're going to have to replace that out. So that's not something that we're worried about currently. We're not seeing leaks, we're not seeing issues. Utilities, as I had found out during the reported time of 2/7 of 2018 through 7 of 2019, were 58,213 a year for this building. The RDO building, utility and gas and electric, 134,000 for roughly the same time period as far as one year total. So 134,490 was the total for RDO. What we found out too is they do have a building automation system over there, which isn't being utilized. So a lot of that is why they don't have a significant savings in their utilities right now is because that building automation system isn't being fully utilized. They are in the same flood zone as we are here. They do not lease out, they don't lease out space at the RDO, but we do to the Fargo Public Schools Federal Credit Union for 350 a month. Now, my overall assessment is, you know, in the next couple of years, we're going to have to spend 320 to a little bit over $350,000 to maintain this building. And it's a building that we're currently out of space. So that was kind of the assessment that we came up with as far as going through just the nuts and bolts of this building. Any questions so far on this building?
Okay, I see David and Jennifer.
Blake, I have a question. You mentioned that we're currently sitting in an area that was once warehouse. If this has been turned into a serviceable area, why couldn't the other 10,000 feet that are sitting back there be converted as well?
Elevations for one, because of where it sits with the flood. Elevations as far as the ramps that have installed, the current concrete ramps. There isn't the right sizing back there to be able to add in floor space or to be able to do any sort of major overhaul to it to be able to do that. It isn't conducive to it at this point. I wouldn't recommend it. If you were going to ask me, should we go ahead and renovate that backyard, I wouldn't recommend it at all.
Jennifer?
Thank you, Blake. The square footage is noted in here in terms of the difference in availability. But how many employees are currently housed here? I know that you mentioned the credit union and the monthly rent. But how many programs or how many departments, I should say really, are we looking to relocate? Where are we outgrowing?
I wanted to say that we're at, how many do we have here? Seventy-some? Almost 100 here? Okay, okay, almost 100 here.
With that in mind, people going in and out.
Yeah.
And may I ask a follow-up? Would any of these departments be able to be located within our current open, our facilities that have capacity right now?
As far as what facilities?
The schools that have capacity that we've been talking about?
No, and here's the thing that we thought of when we were looking at this as a whole, as a three-prong approach. We were looking at, okay, who do we need to pull out of those schools to bring to, let's say we were to go with the RDO. Who would we pull out of the schools at that point to be able to make more space at the schools to be able to accommodate? If the boundary changes happen or whatever happens there, how would we accommodate the more students at certain areas? And what would we do with Agassi and Woodrow? What would we do with adult education, those kind of things? If we're going to look at that too in Agassi down the road, we have to look at who's going to be able to be pulled out of the schools or who's going to be able to go from here or pulled out of Agassi. And that's kind of what we looked at as a whole, is how many people are going to have to go over there? Right now, there's 179 parking spaces over there. They can house 200 people. So that's kind of what we're looking at, is out of that 100 or so that are here, how many more would we be able to pull out to be able to create space elsewhere? It's kind of a roundabout whole thing here as far as what we're looking at for creating space. You know, if we were looking at Indian Education at Agassi or whoever else to be able to pull out of there. We'd want to make sure that we have that space for Fargo Public Schools first, and then we would look at who else would be able to start in a timely process and a timeline to be able to pull out of the other places, to be able to make, have it make sense in the schools for Agassi, for here, and going forward for the next 10 years.
If I could just clarify, so, but we're looking at the district office, Agassi, and RDO. What about our other buildings that we talk about that we can't just backfill with enough students to actually use the room that we have?
So Jennifer, I know Rupak has something, but I would say that this is definitely a sequential conversation. We kind of need to parse it out and establish where we're at right now before we look forward to where the space is. But it is part of the same conversation. I agree. But go ahead.
So what I'm going to share, I think your question, space, right? So space is, I think what you're alluding to is kind of South High School or where North or Ben Franklin, well. So I think the philosophy here, and I want to be very careful as I say this because we're talking about a longer-term vision. None of this happens unless there isn't a step for a board action. So there's no guarantee in terms of, these are conversations that we're bringing to the board. But the vision is that if we were able to have a larger district office, we would actually pull out non-teaching, non-student-centered staff, office staff that we currently do have sitting at, for example, a South High School because we would be able to put then, whether, there's three programs from Agassi that we need to locate down the road if we were to move this direction of decommissioning Agassi. One is ECSE, one is our adult ed program, and then one is Woodrow Wilson High School. None of those, right now, we don't have any space that can just house just those programs. None of those, right now, we don't have any space that can just house just those programs in itself. So we would have to move maybe some of the district office personnel that we have. We do have some district office personnel at South High School that we would be using from there and then possibly looking at those spaces. I, I'm very cautious in saying that because I don't want to, today, we're not talking about where does Woodrow Wilson go down the road or where does ECSE go? But we're talking about in this long-term vision, could that be an option that we want? And what our long-term vision is to utilize the space for our educational programs at our buildings.
So, so the plan is to, to be more efficient, not unlike the, like the distribution center? So we're not leasing out spots all over town and, and so efficiency is the goal?
Correct, and it's also to utilize spaces for the purposes that they're intended to. Because I think one of the challenges, and Blake, correct me if I'm wrong, that we're seeing is that when we have schools that we're using for office space or office space and we're trying to put students there for other services, that's where we're seeing a lot of the maintenance and renovation costs that we have, right? Even when we sometimes try to move, you know, when restroom facilities that we're right now gonna talk about or plumbing issues or different things down the road, I think we're trying to be more efficient in terms of how are we using the spaces for the design that they were intended to because then we can get more life out of them down the road.
If you have another question, that's great, otherwise I was gonna call on Jim because it sounds like he has a motion.
I guess, just as a follow-up, exactly to that point was really where I was going with that is have we considered, there are elementary buildings, to your point, around ECSE that we'll probably be talking about as we move forward through this conversation, but if we're specifically talking about only one option in terms of RDO building, that's why I asked, what is the capacity or the potential or the opportunity within, and I wasn't just referring to one building, within the buildings that FPS currently owns? And what could that look like? Because I know, for example, Agassi, there are lots of leased organizations that pay rent, right? And so, but if we're looking at, talking about Agassi next, that will lead into programming. But here too, how many employees are we looking to relocate? And would we really need RDOs building to do that really is where my question was going? What, are we including all of our buildings within that?
I would say we're not at the RDO discussion yet. I think we're discussing this building. Correct me if I'm wrong.
It was in here as the.
There was just one square foot comparison. This was an overview of this building, if I understood it.
Talking about moving DO to there, so that's how I took it.
Yep, that's not how I did, but go ahead.
I mean, I think I'm just asking, what's the question?
I guess, it's just really, I, I wanted to just know in the analysis, when we're talking about, you know, how many, how many people, how, how many square footage comparison, what would we need, what would that look like? I wanted to know how many employees are here that we're looking to relocate, what departments, what makes sense? Because right now, to your point, there are some scattered here or there, you're trying to pull them together, but.
So the long-term vision in, in terms of, my numbers might be approximate, I think you kind of heard a little bit of estimates down there. I was, I was under the impression we had about eighty-six people at this building. I can get that exact number. The long-term vision would be for this building, if, if the RDO building is something that the board acted on, would be this building would go to the RDO building. We would pull Indian Ed, potentially CEK, depending on what they want to do, the FPS Foundation, and I think those are the programs out of Agassi into the, the new district office, if that's where it was. And then we would come up with a longer-range plan to talk about where does ECSE, adult ed, and Woodrow Wilson High School go to. So those would be the three programs that would be left at Agassi, and we would want to come up with a decommission plan where we talk about where is the best long-term home for those programs moving forward.
Dr. Gandhi, I think you missed some of the teaching and learning staff that'd be over at Agassi as well, like the curriculum specialists.
Sorry, I did.
Psychologists, or, you know, I'm looking back at my teaching and learning friends who are in the back, but there's some other staff members at Office out of Agassi that would also come out of there to, to, to move if, if that would be what we're looking at.
Absolutely.
So we have a, a larger number of staff members that would, would shuffle.
Yep.
You were at planning committee, right, where this was discussed? Okay.
And I apologize, I did not mean to exclude those staff members, just first three, they came to mind.
I guess when you're looking at it, you have to look at it as this is the first piece. What do we do with the district office because you're out of space here? What do we do with everybody that's here, everybody that's currently housed in the schools that you're talking about? What do we do going, moving forward in the next couple of years to say, you know, if we're going to decommission Agassi? This is the step that we have to take in order to look at that because if we just did it today, there, there, we'd have no place to go with anybody, any of your groups or anybody, individuals or the foundation alumni at Agassi. We'd have nowhere to go. So that's kind of why we're looking at this as a, a step. This is the first step is the district office and then talk about the RDO building.
Right, and so the actions are, there's nothing finalizing. We're just, if, if we were to make, take a motion, it would just be to explore.
Yes.
And I, I'm guessing that's what Jim wanted to, to move. Jim, is that correct?
Thank you, yeah. My thoughts on the district office is that we're currently at capacity, and in fact, many of our employees that would normally be housed at the DO are scattered into our other buildings, primarily Agassi, but not just Agassi. Based upon the fact that we will continue to grow and we need to have capacity to house district-level personnel and staff that serve the entire district at a central location, I move that the administration proceed to explore relocation opportunities for the district office and Agassi with a formal appraisal of the RDO, RDO building and the negotiation for the potential purchase.
Second.
Second.
Who, who is the second? Rebecca? Brandon? Okay. Either one, because she and I tied earlier when we were both trying to second, so fine with me either way.
Fair.
Yes, and you're, you're exactly right, Jennifer, this is where RDO comes into the conversation.
Yeah, and I think that, can I, can I make a motion to divide that or amend it? Because here's the thing, if we're talking about all our facilities and an analysis of where our capacity is, that's really limiting to just say, go get a appraisal of RDO, which I believe we already have, right, building and enter into negotiations, is assuming that we're all then in agreement that that's the best place to relocate all these programs. Who's to say that it's not within some of our own buildings that we already have?
Correct. And I would say this is just asking for a formal appraisal. It doesn't finalize anything that.
But he said enter into negotiations with.
Possibly.
As part of the motion. I wouldn't support that, I don't think we're there yet. To your point, Robin, I kind of feel like we're in exploration stage, we're not ready to, to make an offer or to negotiate on a building.
Other discussion. John.
Yeah, I think I, I would definitely support exploring opportunities and options right now. I, I feel similarly to this as the discussion we've had about building and boundaries with our student population. I'm concerned about future revenues, future of the real estate market. If we make too early of a commitment here to this opportunity at RDO, I am worried that that's contingent on what we think we might get selling this property, selling the Agassi property. How long is that going to take? What's the market for these sorts of facilities? That puts me way outside of my comfort zone with this right now.
I think when we talked in planning and we talked about it here, that if we were to move forward, that the Agassi would be a three-to-five-year phase out. So it wouldn't be sell the DO, move to RDO, and sell Agassi. It would be a slow transition out of Agassi because we want to make sure that we can do that due diligence, to your point, Jennifer, where we don't know where Woodrow Wilson would go, we don't know where Indian Education would go. So there's where we can take a look at buildings in our district and where would it best suit? But I think when we look at the, entering the exploration stage, doesn't mean that we have to agree to any negotiation, but it says, let's take a look at it. Let's see what RDO's formal, yes, it's, it's been roughly estimated what it is and appraised, but let's do a formal appraisal of that building. Let's do the formal appraisal of this. We know in the past, we had someone that had some interest in this building. We need to give administration the opportunity to explore those options to see what is out there. Doesn't mean that something has to take place, but exploring it, opening up to a negotiation says, let's take a look, is there an opportunity? But it doesn't say it's a done deal.
Go ahead, John.
So we say it's, the transition would be a three-to-five-year thing. It wasn't part of this presentation yet, but I did see in our packet that there are some imminent expenses at Agassi that are substantial and necessary for that building to be usable at all. I'm wondering, Blake, if you could maybe talk to us here a little bit more about what is needed at Agassi and the state of that building?
So I, I, I would say that's, that's not germane to the, to the motion on the floor at this point, and that is an agenda item to follow. But, but correct me if I'm wrong, if you don't.
I, I would think it would be if we're looking.
On, well, it's a, it's a separate agenda item. Item five C is.
The motion was for district office in Agassi.
Okay.
In, in my opinion.
Okay, thank you, I, I respect that.
Order.
I, I think I was just gonna share a conversation that happened at planning and there are immediate needs at Agassi that need to be addressed and they will be addressed on the next agenda item. I believe, I'm looking at Christie as a planning chair, I believe the recommendation coming out of planning was intentional to put this conversation first on, on the business section of the agenda because potential options for how much you're putting in for an immediate need might be influenced by whether there's a board vision for a longer-term decommission of that building or not. So I believe that was the conversation at planning and, and, you know, this is where we are right now. We can explore and we can keep exploring, we're not asking the board to sign any purchasing agreement, but at the same point, we also have to know as a board, and, and this is, we're planning and, and the board needs to look at our finances, there is, there's never gonna be that perfect guarantee where you're gonna be able to sell this building and buy that building and sell Agassi at the same time. So, so the conversation needs to happen and is, are, is the board willing to invest in that vision? And if so, do the numbers make sense? And RDO has a, has an appraisal that they've done. We have not done an appraisal on their building. We have done an appraisal on our building and we can maybe talk a little bit more about some of those numbers in, in executive session, if that's appropriate then, but I think that's kind of what's led to this conversation.
So I will say, I agree with both of you because this is very clumsy sequence. It, it's, it's just the way it works within our parliamentary procedures. So Brian, I know you had your hand up.
I would just add one more thing that we talked about in planning and that the RDO building, we don't know, there may be other people looking at this building as well. And so if we don't direct our administration to at least investigate and, and things, it may, we may lose the opportunity if it determines that we think it's a good opportunity to have. That was the other thing we had talked about in planning.
I've got Rebecca, Christie, and Jennifer. What is the wording of the current motion, Henry?
Yes, it is the one that is the recommended motion on number, memo number one-twelve. So if that's helpful to you to see it in writing, happy to read it to you if that's helpful as well, but it is the, Jim did read the one that is the recommended motion there.
That's okay, I just wanted to double-check that that is, that that was the wording that was made. I would, I would be supportive of us having some additional conversation regarding Agassi if, I, I wouldn't be opposed to that if we had some of that conversation now, if that helps us make the decision, but I also observed the planning meeting, so I have some additional information in my head that helps me, I guess, make a decision as far as how I would vote on this, but if maybe other board members don't have the information they need, but I'm, I'm settled on it. And I agree with you. Before I call in, Christie, it's my job as the chair to say, this is the motion that's on the floor right now. So if the board members want to change this motion on the floor, then they, they have every, every right to do so. Christie.
I think in your point, asking about the recommendation for what the motion on the table, it's negotiations for a potential purchase. It doesn't mean that it is, this is the only option, but I think at this time and because of the RDO building, one of the other benefits of that was it's fully furnished, which is a tremendous opportunity. And, and taking a look at it for potential purchase, not for a definite purchase agreement that would be signed. So it's allowing the administration to move forward with the work needed before we move forward on what our final choices would be.
Go ahead, Jennifer.
Okay, so my response to that is really, there is an expense that will be incurred from getting appraisals alone. So we, we would be also saying we agree to that. Second, I agree with John's comments, we need to consider that a bigger building is more operational expenses, higher utility costs, and is this the time? And we will be outlaying millions to purchase a new building because you can't time the selling of the buildings that we currently have. Is this an appropriate time? And mostly, I just keep going back to in my mind, we have had capacity conversations over and over and over about how some of our buildings have room, and we're only talking about seventy-five to a hundred students at this point under this particular conversation? I'm sorry, not students, employees. Really? And we're, and we're only talking about RDO building as one option? I feel like it is a conversation that should encompass all of our buildings for the best long-range plan. And if you're talking about programming of Agassi and movement, I would say, my question there would be, if you take all of those programs that are FPS employees and all of the employees here, would you still have the available room for them within our own buildings now or would you have to purchase something? Do we know the answer to that question?
Yeah, and that would have been a great question at the planning committee.
It was like two hours long, some of us had to go.
No, I understand, but that would have been, that would have been a great.
And I'm asking here, I mean, this is an opportunity, right, for further discussion for those that weren't there?
Yep, go ahead.
I think one of the benefits of the RDO building as it's been presented, when we look at other buildings, you mentioned Madison Elementary and some of those places, those aren't centrally located, and for an opportunity to have a district office be centrally located within your community is a bonus.
This is?
No, this isn't. But the RDO building is much more centrally located. So if we can combine all of our FPS people that work for the district office into one location, we know that it would combine different people from the Agassi building that we would pull over, the ones that Rupak has mentioned, we know that there's some DO office personnel at the south. If we could bring those all under one roof and then we have the opportunity for even say in the south, let's say, you know, Woodrow Wilson, and, and we don't want to say that that's where it would be, but then we have an opportunity when we pull some of those people out, that we can look at what our available space is in our schools and then adjust accordingly, whether it's ECSE, Indian Education, you know, Woodrow Wilson, adult ed, those types of things. But then we would have a centralized district office central to the community.
So sequentially, Dr. Gandhi, if the board were to approve this motion, what would happen next?
The board has the ability to, as you'll see on the agenda, go into executive session or they don't, and then we would, regardless of what, what happens there, we would move forward with getting an appraisal on that building and just doing exactly what the motions are, exploring options for the district office and doing a formal appraisal of the RDO building.
Go ahead.
I think I can also answer Jennifer's question. I think Jennifer, your question, correct me if I'm not interpreting this correctly, but is, can we just take all of the people that, that we have spaces for and put them into where we have vacancies in our, in our current buildings? I would have to do a further analysis, but my overall answer would be, no, it's not that easy. You know, we may have some space at Madison or we may have potential space at Ben Franklin or maybe some space at one school, but like I said, it would require renovation of potentially classroom spaces into office spaces. It would also require splitting up departments or individuals or groups of individuals that we keep together purposely, whether it's, you know, Fargo Public Schools Foundation has two employees, Indian Education has one employee and some other people that they work with, the mentors that come in and out, CEK who's currently borrowing some spaces, that's an organization.
that's an organization, so it's not like we just have exact amount of vacancies for the exact amount of people that we have in the district office, or the Agassi building where we can just plug them into wherever we have spaces into our buildings. We'd have to do some further analysis, but I don't think it's, that, that equates as a one-to-one comparison.
Well, there's lots of good information in the site analysis document, well, all of these, but regarding the RDO Ofit building, that we haven't discussed really much at this board meeting, but was discussed at planning. And so, I would say, I mean, I've, I attended that planning meeting, and I read through the information a couple times, 'cause I enjoy just the thoroughness of this, we're, we're so fortunate to have this detail, I think, so, so the teams involved, thanks to everyone, putting it together. But again, I guess this information that I've read through now more than once on the RDO building, and some of the, the positives really, there, there really seemed to be a lot of positives associated with that building, some that we haven't talked about today. I don't wanna speak, and I, I was not a member of the planning committee, and so I was just listening in. So, I guess I'm just wondering, you know, does anyone else here tonight need more information regarding some of the discussion that happened regarding the Ofit building, what it might offer to us before we decide to vote on this? I'd be ready to vote right now, but I don't know if anyone else is.
I think I am, I'm supportive of, you know, exploring our relocation opportunities, and if we think we're gonna move forward with this building, we absolutely should be getting an appraisal of it right now. I don't want us to go through that exercise if we come out on the other side and we're not gonna make that decision, if we don't think it's going to be likely. I think getting in more information for us to make that final decision is appropriate, but if we can look out three to six months from now, and we're gonna be sitting around here saying, yeah, that was a waste of time, we're not gonna do that, we're gonna do something else, that's what I'm, that's what I'm really worried about, is when we do get to the point now where we're gonna say, okay, we're gonna lay out some money, will, will we say yes at that time? Or are we asking people to do a lot of work for us that is not gonna be used to purpose?
Dr. Gandhi.
I, I agree with John's sentiments, it's, it's, you know, this is where it gets tricky as, as a subsector of the government and being a public board. I mean, Blake and his team have done a phenomenal analysis on three buildings in a very short amount of time, and put together almost every piece of information they could with the resources that we have. Purchases such as these, and decisions such as these should not be taken lightly, and I think our taxpayers deserve the intense scrutiny that we give, but no similar to feasibility studies that we've done in the past that didn't get approved. At certain point, to make a more informed decision, you need to invest in that short-term cost to get that information you need, because we can't predict the future, we can't expect what's gonna happen down the road. I think, I've, if Blake feels comfortable, I feel safe to say that everything that we can offer you right now on what we know about the RDO building is, is in the packet and is in the analysis there. Additional information about exactly what the appraisal is gonna come out to, that, that would have, require a formal action and an appraisal to do that, and yes, it's gonna cost money to do that appraisal, but I think it's worth it if this is something that we're considering. And I think it's also okay if that's something that we don't wanna do, because we said, hey, the investment isn't worth it for us as a district. But going to Rebecca's question of what were some of the other things that were talked about as planning, was not just a move for the district office, but it was looking at, can this building, because of the way it's located, alleviate some of the parking concerns that we have for Hawthorne Elementary School, and then potentially looking at that shared green space. So, where the RDO building currently sits is shares green space with the Fargo Park District and Fargo Public Schools, and then the RDO building itself, and can that be some opportunities for the district down the road? We don't know what those opportunities are, but those are some of the other things that we had talked about as benefits. And it is absolutely correct that we did not move forward and say, let's try to find another home for the district office and, and go find this building. This was an opportunity that was presented to us, and we explored it, and we said there's multiple benefits to it. What the commitment that you'll have from me and from administration is that, it's not like we're not gonna look at other better options, we're not sold on only one option. This was an opportunity that was presented, so we did some research, we brought it to the board, and that's kinda where we are now. If there's something better that comes along the way, or, or the appraisal, or the prices don't make sense, then it doesn't make sense for us as a district, and we don't have to move forward with the purchase.
Could I offer an amendment to this motion that would include a formal appraisal of the district office?
You certainly may. I will look for a second.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Have we not had an official appraisal done of this building?
We did in 2019.
That's fine, if we could know what it is.
Want just the appraisal number? Okay. The appraisal number for the current district office as it sits was between $4,090,000 and $4.14 million.
I assume we had to pay for that appraisal?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so would you like to withdraw your amendment?
I will with, yes, I'll withdraw my amendment.
Okay. Did we do that right, Anne Marie?
Technically, no. Once a amendment has been seconded, it is a, on the floor, it would need to be voted down.
Okay, I think we better do it the right way. So, we are, have an amendment on the floor, you all saw how that transpired, so I would ask Anne Marie, vote on the amendment.
We're voting on the amendment on the floor, Johnson.
No.
Knutson?
No.
Brian Nelson?
No.
Paulson?
No.
Roden Biker?
No.
Alrick?
No.
Ani?
No.
Benson?
No.
President Nelson?
No. We took care of that, didn't we? Okay, Jennifer.
Okay, so, I'm also wondering if we could make a motion to move this, or postpone a vote on the original motion until after we've heard the Agassi presentation, to be able to further discuss it as a whole.
Thinking through this procedurally.
So, we have a motion on the floor, as, as you see it here, and we are asking to table this motion until we hear the agenda item 5C. Is that understood properly? So, you're asking to table the motion, is that the proper? I think I got this one.
Or I could ask to kill the motion, I guess.
You could.
Yeah, we, we could-
But then we'd still have to have a motion on this item, I think. So, I thought if we laid it on the table, we could-
We can lay it on the table.
Yeah, Jennifer would like to lay it on the table until something else can be taken up, yes. You do need a, a second on that. Second.
Okay, now we have discussion on laying this item on the table until 5C is discussed. Okay, I don't see any hands, Anne Marie.
Yes.
Brian Nelson?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Roden Biker?
Yes.
Alrick?
Yes.
Ani?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
President Nelson?
Yes. So, this item will be laid on the table until we hear report 5C, and then at that point, I would assume that if we need to go into executive session, a board member can make that motion. Okay, I need a break. So, it is 7:10, I will meet you all back here, I suppose we're gonna take our turns in the restroom, so maybe, let's try for 7:15.[1195.71]
Welcome back, everybody. It looks like we are on to item five C now. And that is talking about the Agassi Plumbing. Memo number 113. Dr. Gandhi?
Sure. I will, I'll do a quick introduction and then hand it over to Jackie or Blake that might want to touch base on this. But there are some, as alluded to earlier today, immediate plumbing concerns at the Agassi Building that do need to be addressed. We're asking the board to take action on one of the options that was considered. Administration would want to, you know, we're looking for recommendations to proceed to secure bids for plumbing renovations. Blake can talk through the different options. They come at different price points and they do different things. At the planning committee, the recommendation was to bring all of these options for the board to discuss because there wasn't, you know, at that point, the planning committee didn't know what the board was going to do in terms of the previous business item, to have a long-term vision for Agassi or not. Well, since that now got tabled, we are going to flip it and now we need to address the immediate needs first. And the board's going to have to decide, you know, which option do you want us to proceed with for securing bids? And we'll take your recommendation from there.
We all had the memo in front of us. Is there anything that the board would like presented by Blake? Blake, were you presenting, planning on presenting?
I was just going to go over the different options here as far as what it includes. In my Agassi assessment, it does show some pictures of some of the areas we're talking about, some of the things we're talking about there as well. So if you look at that in your packets, you'll see those. But it just basically to go over the options A, B, and C as far as what we came up with for a cost associated with those. But these are costs that are visible. Those costs are what we see now currently. That's not the cost of when we start tearing up a floor or tearing a wall apart or what we find at that point. So, and there's a lot of unknowns with Agassi. So that's kind of where we're at with these. So option A would be to correct our sewer issue over there because during the wintertime especially, there is a smell that goes through the building. That is from pipes that are corroded because they're the pipes that are original to the building. This is what you wanted me to go over, correct? The different options? Good. Okay. So I saw your face and I was like, oh, maybe I shouldn't talk about that. But those options, that option does correct that sewer issue that we have in that one area. It gets rid of that smell. It gets rid, it puts some new PVC pipe in as opposed to what's in there now, which is gone, basically. So right now, we are venting some sewer into ground as opposed to through the pipes. So that's just to give you a brief overview of what our current pipe situation is there. Additional bathrooms, ECSE is now out of any space that they have to be able to put bathrooms in. My predecessor came up with a plan to do bathrooms over there in the ECSE classrooms, Jack and Jill bathrooms, but that would require doing some major digging in the hallways and digging up all the terrazzo and going into the classrooms to put plumbing in there. The plan that we came up with a couple of weeks ago was that we were going to change some of the areas in that aren't being used currently. There was an old girl's shower and restroom back there. We're going to turn that and convert that into bathroom space because it is in relatively good proximity to those classrooms. So you just go down a hallway and it's right there. So we were going to create boys' and girls' bathrooms down there in that hallway. And I do have pictures of where that would be at as well in there, the bathrooms and the shower space that we would convert. We would add some office space in there as well. That's currently just storage space right now because we'd find other places for that stuff because it's half-used, half-not. So we'd create three additional offices in that hallway chaseway that everything is in right now. And then the additional classrooms would be one that they would gain from some of this as well. So that's correcting a good portion of some of the issues would be option A. And I can go over in detail the total amount of everything that needs to get replaced or fixed over at Agassi later on, but this is just for this sewer issue, the plumbing issue. Option B is to correct the sewers and the pipes that come in there for what we have and what is corroded. Additional bathrooms, we would not add any. Those portable sinks that are in the classrooms right now, we would leave as portable sinks. If any of you have ever used, had gone camping and had a portable sink out there, that's what's in the classrooms currently. And we would require the move of the renters. And I'm not versed on who actually is our renters over there. It's, who is it over there?
We have Seek and then we have the Alumni.
Yes. Seek and Alumni is who we would have to require to move in order to make that work because then we would need that additional office space. Now, that cost is $525,000 just to correct the sewer issue. And the move of the renters is something internal that we would do ourselves. It wouldn't be a cost. So $525,000 for that. Option A is 1.4 million. Option C would be to correct the sewer. No additional bathrooms. Leave the sinks as portable. We wouldn't do anything with the renters that we have there, no moving of that. And then we would take and go ahead and add one classroom at Centennial and one classroom at Kennedy for our ECSE. That would be the $525,000 of option B plus an additional $60,000 to be able to create that space. So those are the three options that we had looked at for the plumbing issue over there. But it doesn't fix the full plumbing issue, but it does address some of the issues as it sits right now.
So to clarify, these are kind of a short-term fix. But the extra $60,000 on option C, would we need those bathrooms anyway, or classrooms anyway, at Centennial and Kennedy based upon ECSE? Is it, I see Missy raising her hands.
I defer to Missy on that one.
There we go. So I did, I've been meeting with Donna. We've done walking the space and looking. And I will say that even that option would have to be tweaked when we talk about moving to Kennedy and Centennial. One of the issues that we're trying to work through is our ancillary services for ECSE. Almost all of our students in ECSE have an IEP and majority receives speech therapy, OT, and PT therapy. Right now, we're not sure on the capacity of the OT/PT room at our current elementaries to put the classroom in and give them access to that. Now, we'd certainly try to work through that, but it's not, we haven't worked through that plan completely, if that makes sense. So it is, there is some things we'd have to work through. The other piece is bathrooming is extremely important with our three- to five-year-olds as we go forward with the space. So even at Kennedy, we'd have to really look at their access to a space with a changing table, which might require a few remodeling dollars. So even if we have a classroom, it doesn't mean it's an immediate fix. I just wanted to make sure that I shared that with you. And then maybe I didn't answer the question, though.
Yeah. Thank you for that. But would we not need that classroom space regardless of any of the plumbing because that was the long-term vision for ECSE, to expand into three different sites across Fargo?
For your St. Kennedy?
Yes.
It would depend. The, we, our first project is Longfellow, so we'll see how that goes next year. But we were able to get the speech space, OT space, and the classrooms with bathrooms there. So that'd be our model. Just fitting into one classroom, I don't know if Kennedy would be the place that we'd have four classrooms available for a pod, if that makes sense, in the future.
It does. Thank you.
Yep. And I think that was it, I think, to your question, Robin. We, part of the task force recommendation is to have a north, central, and south center for ECSE. Each of those centers in our long-term vision and what we need would be a pod of four classrooms. So if we're looking at one classroom at Kennedy and one classroom at Centennial, no, that remodel would not be just a space we're going to use for ECSE down the road because we're looking for, down the road, a potential opportunity to have four classrooms in the same space. And neither of those buildings have that.
We've got David and then Rebecca.
I have a question for Blake. And actually, Blake, it's a two-part question. First of all, if we didn't move an ECSE classroom into Agassi, how much would we have to spend on the plumbing? And secondly, the scenario that's been laid out to us makes it appear within our vision that we'll be selling this building within five years. Would these plumbing changes enhance its sale or is the plumbing just something that's going to have to be addressed by whoever buys it?
Well, let me, let me address the last part of that question. The value in Agassi as it sits right now is in the land. It's not in the building whatsoever. So even if we did do renovations or added plumbing, added bathrooms, it doesn't really increase the cost of that building, the way it sits. I can give you the estimate of what we have there currently for needs to be repairs if we were going to keep that building for the next three to five years and all that. You know, we're looking, I mean, if it's okay for me to share that number, we're looking over $13 million to be able to get that building, to maintain it, and to make it habitable for the next three to five years. Now, that's where I say that the value is in the land itself because any, anybody that I've talked to as far as appraisers, and I'll say that that's where the value is at in there. That's why they had a tough time coming up with an appraised value of that building because the land is valuable. The building is not, the way it sits currently. Now, to address the first part of your question, if we didn't add an ECSE classroom in there, we would still have to do something with the sewer and with the pipes over there, whether that would be a $1.4 million fix to fix the whole sewer issue that we have as far as just the smell or to just, we'd have to end up addressing something as far as bathrooms as well. So right now, the way it sits, they have one bathroom across the hall and then they have a boys' and girls' bathroom down the hall. They're very small. It doesn't suit the needs of what they have currently at ECSE. If we were to go ahead and add those bathrooms and do the 1.4 million, yes, it'd be a 1.4 million temporary fix to whether or not we vacated that building or whether or not we stayed in that building for five years total. If we stayed in there total, we still have to invest that 1.4 million cumulatively over the next few years in order to make sure that that building is habitable.
I've got Rebecca and Jennifer.
So where the $60,000 is listed under option C, Missy, based on what you were saying, and that that number could change based on some of the needs?
Yes.
That we have. It could be a higher number.
One of the pieces in there would be is if we still stay at Agassi and we do the lowest amount to get the smell and not add a bathroom, is we might have to look at the staffing to make sure that we can get children to the bathroom. And that might mean some additional, whether it's a pair professional or just the coordination of times.
Okay. Jennifer?
Okay. So I sort of have a two-part question. So where the sewer issue is happening, is that only, is the programming in that area only ECSE or is there somewhere, is there additional classroom, is there additional programs down in the same area?
Who it affects the most is ECSE. What it affects in the building is the whole building. And, you know, I don't like to give out generalizations necessarily without showing you everything, but generally speaking, that's what it is, is the plumbing in the whole building. If you have more ECSE in that building or we add anybody to that building currently, it's going to tax the system we have in there currently. We're going to have more issues.
Yeah.
So without doing a $13 million plumbing and electrical fix in that building, you're looking at smaller costs in order just to maintain and keep that building for the next few years.
Yeah. And basically, if I may, where I was going with that is if it's really affecting ECSE, could we accelerate the move into the locations where that is our plan, right? And spend the money there seems wiser to me at the new buildings rather than here. And so that's why I was wondering, is it affecting anyone else? And if we were able to accelerate and move that program out, then what would it look like in terms of costs? If anything, could we leave it?
Well, if you're going to look at something in terms of cost, I would look at just looking at what we spent over at Longfellow to be able to add those four, those four classrooms back there. But we renovated an area back there to be able to add those at Longfellow. If we're talking about it, any other buildings, we'd have to add on. So you're talking, I wouldn't even want to give you an estimate right now of what that would cost. I'd rather get some estimates and just kind of give you a ballpark of what that would be to be able to tell you, okay, this is what it would be if we decided to put some ECS classrooms, ECSE classrooms onto Kennedy, onto Centennial, or whatever building that you would choose. So I would rather be able to give you some better numbers.
But to that point, aren't there already ECSE classes at more than just Kennedy and Centennial is, that are?
Yeah. So currently, we're at Centennial, Agassi, and Madison. And so Madison classes will be moving to Longfellow. And we have repurposed the space at Madison for a specialized education program. And so that is our high-functioning, low-functioning autism. We need another section of low-functioning autism. So they're going to go into, to the classrooms. So they would have one classroom available. And I think that's where we're struggling a little bit, is it travel of our teachers and ancillary services. We can't break them up in one section per building. It makes much more sense financially for staff to have about a group of three to four sections for ECSE, if that helps.
Before I call in, Rupak, real quick, Blake, so it's the, it's the option B or C, is that, if we do that, is that kind of a cross our fingers and hope nothing happens? And then we have to do the 1.4?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Just wanted, just wanted to say that out loud.
And if I could, you know, all of these options are a temporary cross-your-fingers because unless we're talking about replacing all of the plumbing in that building, and there are some issues with how we can replace that at this point, with the current tunnel system that's under there is basically closed off at this point. So we'd have to build tunnels on other floors. So you're talking pretty good cost to be able to do that. But if you're talking just adding any of these, it's a temporary fix, but you're still, as a group with the maintenance and operations team, we're still thinking, okay, if we invest the 1.4 million into correcting some of the sewer issues, adding the two bathrooms, you know, what are we going to see after that? And some of those things that we look at is, what's the, what's the taxing on the system currently? Well, it's going to be taxed quite a bit even after you do these things. So we're still going to have issues.
Okay. Rupak, go ahead.
And I was just going to answer Jennifer's question about can we accelerate the move of ECSE. We are limited a little bit because the vision of the north side ECSE center, which is going to be at Longfellow, and we're doing some of that work right there. Then we have a center location, and I think in the previous Agassi analysis, it shows you some of the spaces that we have. We don't have four spaces anywhere center of town, and we don't have four classrooms anywhere south of town. So while this is very preliminary and just thoughts, a conversation we've had down the road is the south side vision for ECSE might be if and when we need to build a new elementary school down there because that's when we can potentially provide for that space to have for the four classroom centers. Right now, we can look at accelerating the move of ECSE, but I don't, I think Missy's been kind of doing that. We don't have a home to get what we need for all the spaces that we would need.
A follow-up to that. Thank you, Rupak. So to either one of you, then, when we're talking about location, that sounds like years and years down the road, right, for South. So we're going to need, within three to five years, if that's the plan, to move ECSE out, we're going to need somewhere else to put them. So is that McKinley? Because now when you're talking about staff and traveling and services, we have something close and we have capacity available. I mean, isn't that something, when we talk about maybe an accelerated plan that's necessary? That seems like a more fiscally responsible move as well as what's, might be best in terms of resource availability for students versus waiting for, I don't even know what the timeline is, for a new elementary now. Five years, 10 years?
Yeah. I think, again, I don't know if McKinley has four classroom centers right now. And then secondly, that would go against, you know, right now, we're trying to follow the task force recommendation of a north, central, and south side service center for ECSE. So McKinley and Longfellow would both fall under the north side if we were to look at that campus, not even saying we have an opportunity there.
I've got Kristy and then Rebecca.
It's my understanding that something needs to be done in order for the building to be usable in the fall. Is that correct?
Yes. Yep.
Thank you.
And I really like to entertain a motion, but Rebecca, did you have your hand up?
I did because I was trying to figure out ECSE regarding Central Fargo. And if, I'm looking on page 12 of this, of this document where we're talking about, yeah, talking about the Agassi building. I think the first two bullet points are, we, did we maybe throw out, I might be misunderstanding this, though, but potentially looking at either the RDO building or South to hold an ECSE program or am I not saying that or representing that correctly?
I think we've tried to entertain any options that could be possible. I think the amount of revision or remodeling needed at South is just something we'd have to, again, bring here, just like remodeling when we went with Longfellow because you remodel a secondary space for elementary, the bathrooms and some of those things are quite expensive. But it doesn't, we're willing to look at options for that South side. But we also know if Woodrow needed a home, if we were going to clear it out, maybe that doesn't make as much sense if there's, if they need the space, so.
John?
I have a question about the necessity for the bathrooms. Are we looking at any sort of regulatory compliance issues with not having proper facilities for these students?
So we have the, I guess, the proper bathrooms. It's just that it's not as convenient, I would say, the distance they have to travel to get to the bathrooms. So the ideal model is going to be a Jack and Jill bathroom that could be shared. Right now, because of Agassi's layout, the distance traveled is long and it will require adult supervision with three- to five-year-olds.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay.
Do you have a follow-up, John?
No, I was going to make a motion.
Oh. Wait.
Go ahead.
Okay.
I would move that the administration proceed to secure bids for plumbing renovations to Agassi under option A.
Sir, so option A.
Second. I'll second that so we can have any other discussion needed.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor to have administration proceed to secure bids for plumbing renovations to Agassi under option A. Is that correct? Okay. Discussion. Go ahead.
Can I just say, to clarify, because they're listed as option 1, 2, 3, 4, do you mean A as in 1.4 million dollar option?
No, the options presented on the memo.
Oh, on your memo. I thought you were still on this page. Got it. Oh, on your memo. I thought you were still on this page. Got it. Got it. Thank you.
Okay, did that help?
They're different, well, they're different.
I know. Brian?
I think in planning, that was the two options, A and B is what we were kind of looking at.
I personally would vote against this one, because I would prefer option B. I, I think it's a smaller investment. Is, is it a risk? Yes, but so is the 1.4 million. Any other discussion, board discussion? Christie?
I just, when I look at the two options as well, and I know we had some very long discussions in planning on this, I struggle with the 1.4 million when we don't know how long we plan to stay there. And that's, that's a larger investment. I just think if we can, 525 is still a large investment. But if it could correct the problems that we have for now, I feel that that would be a better choice.
Other board, David?
I tend to agree with Robin and Christie. I, I'd have a great deal of difficulty spending 1.4 million dollars in a building that we may not see as a long-term part of the Fargo school system. I'd, I'd be interested, and I don't know if it's appropriate or not, I'd be interested in hearing what Blake feels is the best of the three options.
I, I, well, and I'm, I'm going to save you here, because the recommendation was here to, to really put the onus on the board, so.
Under, under the assumption that the agenda items were flipped, too, so remember that. So that was all intentional, but when we tabled the last motion to this, it was kind of to avoid this situation that we're in.
I'll, I'll allow the question if you're comfortable answering it.
I can answer it in two ways without it sounding wishy-washy. Now, me, from a facility standpoint, I always look for what's going to be the best solution to move forward that everybody's going to be happy with. Whenever we're space planning, whenever we're looking at renovations, whenever we're looking at anything as far as repairs, what's going to be the best solution? People come to us a lot with, I want to put a wall in here because I need to divide this into two classrooms to create space. Well, that may not make sense. Let's look at something else. Now, when I'm looking at this as a whole, I look at the option A. Option A does correct a lot of issues. It does add bathrooms, but is that the best value for the money that would be spent? If I'm looking at the best value, it would be option B. Just because of the fact that, you know, it's, if it's a temporary thing to fix a larger issue, to address a larger issue and possibly vacate that building in three to five years, then personally, from my perspective, I would say option B. Option A is great. It's fantastic. It, it makes usable space. It does add a lot of necessary things. But it adds necessary things to a building that we're going to keep for longer term than three to five years. So that would be my opinion, where I would stand with it.
Brandy?
I would say option B as well, and I have been in that building during the whole sewer thing, and it's terrible.
How do you really feel, Brandy? Okay, we have a motion on the floor. John?
And just in defense of my motion, I do think that we have a sensitive population that isn't being well-served right now. And we're thinking three to five years. I think that's a really, really tenuous guess right now. I am not comfortable with that at all, that we're going to be out of there in three to five years. And if that's going to be the case, then I think we should invest in these kids.
Okay, Brian?
And that's really what I'm thinking between the two, because like I said in planning, I'm both sides of the fence here, A or, A or B. And that's what it comes down to me, and that's why I would agree with you, John, and what you're saying.
I would, thank you for saying that. I would clarify that we all care about our kids. So to do that in a fiscally responsible way as much as possible is, I don't want to discount any care for any of the board members. Jennifer?
And I would add to that, too, that, you know, part of the discussion was, how can we accelerate this for that very reason? Because I think we heard, you know, loud and clear a handful of years ago that when that program was over at Eagles, that they wanted to stay together, that they wanted their partners to be in, under the same roof. And so I, I have to say, I'm a little bit surprised actually of what came out of the recommendation from the task force because of that reason. Because I feel like the message was pretty clear. They wanted to be together. And that way, they could also share resources and, and programmings and things. So, so I do think that on that note, we are saying we want to accelerate this to get them in a, a permanent home that is best suited for all of those kids' needs. And so, you know, I just think we need to do that. We need to make that a priority.
Okay, I've got Rebecca and Brian.
So, so much of this links up to what our decisions are going to be for Agassi. And we don't know yet, because we haven't had enough of the discussion or, you know, information that we need. So what if we went with option B at 500, 525? What kind of a timeframe do you need? I mean, is there, is there a point where we can, say, approve option B and have some more discussion about Agassi? And potentially come back, I don't, I'm not saying tonight, I don't know when, but soon, and say, we want to invest the additional dollars as indicated in option A because of having, after having further discussion and analysis with Agassi?
I would say the motion on the floor right now is for motion A. And that's what, that's my job, to try to guide this discussion.
Yeah, I understand that.
Rupak?
This recommendation is here because we need to secure bids. And, and that's a process to get work done, 21-day posting, and then getting the bids to get work done this summer so we can meet the needs of the kids. I know that these are, these are really tough decisions, even, even the previous one as well. Decisions can change over time, but sometimes we, what we seek as administration is the vision from the board. Commit to a vision, and then if, if it doesn't work out, it doesn't work out. But at least give us a sense of direction. And I think that's what we're really seeking here, when we keep going back and saying, can we go back and explore? Or can we come back and put this decision off? It, it doesn't help, and then our kids are just waiting. And some of these decisions are going to be hard. We get it. They're either expensive, or they can impact people. But it's here today because we need to move forward. And we, we had conversations about whether this could be brought at the June 9 meeting, and it couldn't. We need to be able to go secure bids to get the work started.
Thank you. Yes, we can't move forward until we make a decision. And I think we've been playing this game for about two and a half years. So, any other board hands? And Jim, I can't see you. If you have your hand up.
Nope, I don't.
Okay, I, I sense not consensus, but where everybody's going to sit. So I would hope that we could take a vote now. Emery?
Brian Nelson?
Yes.
Paulson?
No.
Rowan Biker?
Yes.
Ulrich?
No.
Ani?
No.
Benson?
No.
Johnson?
Yes.
Knutson?
Yes.
President Nelson?
No.
Motion fails?
Five, four, five, yes.
Okay, okay. To move forward.
Robin, I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead, Jim.
I'd like to move that the administration proceed to secure bids for the plumbing renovation at Agassi under the option B in the memo.
Second. Okay, thank you. Motion is on the floor. Further discussion? Jennifer?
Question about process. So if they're securing bids, after they secure bids, they're coming back? Or is this a permission to do the work?
Not used to sitting in the galley. We would solicit bids for this project, and it would then come to you to approve. So if for some reason they came in high, much higher than you're comfortable with, we would have the opportunity, or you'd have the opportunity to change.
Okay, I see no hands. I think we're ready for this, about Emery.
Paulson?
Yes.
Rowan Biker?
Yes.
Ulrich?
Yes.
Ani?
Yes.
Benson?
No.
Johnson?
Yes.
Knutson?
Yes.
Brian Nelson?
Yes.
President Nelson?
Yes, motion carries. So if we were to go back now, we would go into executive session for the purpose of, am I doing this right? No!
You're going back to the original.
That's right, I'm sorry. Now, we have an item on the table. And so in order to remove that from the table, that needs board action. So I need, I would entertain a motion to remove that item from the table.
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, does that get any discussion?
Sorry, I'm still catching up from getting the last thing done. It's not debatable. We would need to, to vote, and it passes by a majority.
Okay, then we're ready for a vote.
Would you just clarify, we're voting on the, what we tabled earlier?
Yep, just to bring it off the table. Just remove it, move it from the table to bring back discussion on that item.
What happens if it doesn't pass, if it doesn't come back? Does it die and start over? Just for clarification on process.
It would stay on the table, and you would move on in your agenda.
Got it.
Are we ready?
We're ready. We're removing the motion that was on the floor for item 5A from the table, because Jennifer Benson moved to put it on the table until after this agenda item. So we have to remove it from the table in order to bring it back to the floor to start discussing it again.
Yep, you just moved that onto the table to, to take up this other agenda item. Makes sense? All right, great. Rowan Biker?
Yes.
Ulrich?
Yes.
Ani?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Knutson?
Yes.
Brian Nelson?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
President Nelson?
Yes, okay, so we have, the original motion is back on the floor. And since that happened a while ago, I would ask Emery to, to read that for us.
Thank you, yes. That is the one that is on, if you jump back to memo 112, so we're jumping back to 112, that Jim did move the motion that is on that recommended, as a recommendation on that memo, which says that administration proceed to explore relocation opportunities for the district office in Agassi with a formal appraisal of the RDO building and the negotiations for potential purchase.
Okay. Motion's on the floor. I see no hands. Emery, we are keeping you busy tonight. Take your time.
Yeah, thanks for giving me just a second to keep up with you. Okay. All right, thank you. Ulrich?
Yes.
Ani?
Yes.
Benson?
No.
Johnson?
Yes.
Knutson?
Yes.
Brian Nelson?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Rowan Biker?
Yes.
President Nelson? Yes, motion carries.
Now, we could go into possible executive session for the purpose of negotiation strategy, but I need a motion to do that. And this is, this is negotiations for the price of possibly the district office.
Robin?
Yes, Jim?
I, I kind of think we're maybe a bit premature until that appraisal comes back. We really know what we might want to give for direction in the negotiation.
Okay. I'm seeing nods. So it looks like we won't have to go into executive session, but we are required to have that as a placeholder on our agenda for meeting notice requirements. Okay, on to the next item then, item 5D, operational plan. And this is the work of the superintendent and his cabinet, your planning for the year.
Sure, so as you'll see in your board packet, we provide a monitoring update on our, on our operational plan. As you can imagine, this year's operational plan did have some focus areas that we did not expect or that were not outlined as a result of transitioning to distance learning. I do feel confident, and I'm grateful for a lot of the work of all of our staff that have helped us complete most of the work in the operational plan. I think there's two areas where we did say was impacted by COVID-19. And we're going to continue doing that, some of that work. Our operational plan is a living document. We will gleam whatever would need to be carried over from this year onto the next year. The best example I can give you is the safety committee. You know, we continued the safety committee from last year to this year. But then that was something that the safety committee had to stop their work when, when we transitioned to distance learning. There's absolutely no expectation that that work is permanently stopped. That's something that we'd carry over next year into their operational plan. Although the safety committee did a lot of work this year in terms of updating some policies, we still know that there's a lot of work that we have left to do as well. So in your board packets, just for your review, is, is a completion and monitoring document of our operational plan. All of cabinets here to answer any questions that you may have, if there are questions regarding any specific one item.
Go ahead, Christie.
President Nelson, I move that the Board of Education approve the final report for the 1920 operational plan as provided.
Second, okay. Go ahead, John.
No questions. I just want to say what an outstanding job, I think, the superintendent and the administration have done this year. This, when we first approved this operational plan, we knew it was going to be hefty and, and a big pull. And then COVID-19 and the pandemic happened. And it's, it's really impressive what we've had done up to that point and through that. And to see so little that was impacted is quite a tribute to the people we have working at Fargo Public Schools. So thank you for all of your hard work, and please keep it up in the future.
Thank you.
And I would say the operational plan is, is a reflection not only on Dr. Gani and his team, but also everybody else that works for Fargo Public Schools, because they all, they all worked to make that happen. And it's been, it's been one heck of a ride. Brandy, did you have something else?
Same thing you just said.
Ditto. Okay. Okay, I see no other hands. Emery?
Ani?
Yes.
Benson? Johnson?
Yes.
Knutson?
Yes.
Brian Nelson?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Rowan Biker?
Yes.
Ulrich?
Yes.
President Nelson? Yes. You can file the report. Next calendar, or, sorry, next agenda item is the calendar. And I don't know if we need a, Bob, looks like he's going to present to us.
Well, thank you very much. It is my pleasure to, to share with you the draft calendar for 2122. This has been a unique opportunity as we pulled together the calendar committee, which was 18 different individuals from teachers, principals, students, district office staff, support staff. We started out face-to-face, and then we transitioned to online, which was a unique and wonderful opportunity for us to discuss, get feedback, and then come back together to build this draft. You'll notice on the leading memo, it talks about some of the information that we looked at. We looked at the most recent calendar survey, where we issued that to students, to our staff, and to our parents. And some of the, the driving pieces behind that is when do we start school? And when do we end a school year? There's not an overwhelming, this is the way to do it. But both end a school year? There's not an overwhelming, this is the way to do it. But both from staff, students, and parents, we found that the majority wanted to start in August and be done in May if at all possible. We also asked a question about spring break and what we found that it was very close to 50/50. Do we want a week long spring break? Do we not? When it came to parents, our staff and students answered a little bit differently. But based on that, the calendar committee has really used a every other year approach where one year we'll do a week long spring break and then the next year we would not in the calendar. You'll notice for 2122, this does not have a week long spring break, but the calendar right before that does. So we followed that pattern. This calendar starts a little bit differently than the last few calendars that we have shared with you. Instead of starting with three professional development days, this calendar starts with two. And we would still be allowed under this calendar to follow the provision of the teacher contract that says that we need at least two half days of professional practice time. We would be able to accommodate that under this calendar. You'll notice where some of the different holidays are placed made this a very unique calendar to build. For example, in November, when you look at the day that we are required to have off, the 11th, which is a Thursday, what does that mean for the Friday and so on? Or where Thanksgiving or some of the other holidays fall? And that made for some great conversations from the committee. We went through multiple drafts. In fact, I think this is draft six that the committee created. And finally, we came to consensus at our last committee meeting. We agreed at the very beginning that consensus would mean when 80% of the committee could live with the calendar moving forward, that we would say that we had consensus and we reached that mark plus. So with that, I share with you the draft calendar and I can answer any questions that you might have.
Go ahead, Brian, since you sit on this committee.
Right. And I would move that the 2021, 20, 2021, 22 school calendar be approved as presented.
Second.
Okay. A motion on the floor. Jennifer?
Question, Brian or Bob. So when you talk about consensus being reached at 80%, I'm just sort of curious, what did the other, whether it was 80, 20, what did the others that didn't agree, what points were they making about the calendar?
Great question. I think one of the points really was November 12th. What do we do with that day? When you are required to have the, the 11th off? If we then made that a no contact day where it was just a day off, where then would you find another contact day within the calendar? So that was some of the conversation. We also had great conversation around spring break. And should we do two years in a row, a week long spring break or not? If we did, again, looking at where do you start, where do you end? That really stretches that calendar even longer. And then the last thing that we looked at that probably had the most conversation was should we have a three or a four day weekend in January or February for staff? So that they also could have some time during the, the year. But as we ended the conversation and came to consensus, this was the best that we could come up with based upon where some of those days were. And it met the majority or that 80% consensus.
Dr. Gross, would you enlighten me, please? Is the state still requiring us to take the 21st and the 22nd as no school days?
Oh, yes, of October. There is a statute that talks about that we are required to have two days that we are not allowed to do student contact on any days that are deemed by the state superintendent for professional development purposes. For many, many years, that was the North Dakota Education Association Conference. Then it changed to the time where the North Dakota Council of Educational Leaders Conference was. I don't know when it will be or what it will be used for during this calendar, but we're still required to have those two days off.
Another example of how little control we have over our calendar. Okay, got a motion on the floor? I think, I think we're ready, Anne Marie.
Benson.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Knutson.
Yes.
Brian Nelson.
Yes.
Paulson.
Yes.
Rowan Biker.
Yes.
Ulrich.
Yes.
Ani.
Yes.
President Nelson.
Yes. We have an approved 2122 calendar. Yeah, go ahead, David.
I don't know how, I know I can't make a motion. This, I have a subject I think should come into either planning or governance or wherever it should be. I would like to see the administration decide what we're going to do with the staff picnic and if and when we're, if we're going to have that large gathering at the Shields Arena. I think that both of those in light of what's happening, what we don't know is happening, should be discussed. And I would assume, at least with the Shields Arena, some, something would have to be decided really quickly.
Shields was done.
Is it?
Shields was already sent out to us.
Oh, I missed it. I'm sorry. How about the staff picnic?
We haven't, I mean, the administration hasn't communicated with staff picnic. I know it's on the, the board's work calendar. The date's still there, but.
Yeah, we have not, I guess, just have not talked about that picnic in August. We do have a date selected and have the, the park district shelter reserved, but obviously we, we can talk about that. We just haven't yet. We've had to make some decisions about the all-staff opener that we look to transition to a, a virtual or a recorded item that will be played for staff. But we just haven't yet talked about the picnic.
Correct.
No worries. Okay, on to 6A, committee liaison and correspondence reports. I know we're all tired, so if we can keep them brief, I'd appreciate it. We will start with Brian Nelson and move our way around.
Um, just basically negotiations, meetings and planning meetings, virtual, Zoom. I really enjoy this. Again, I'm so tired of Zoom, I gotta be honest. But that's what I've been doing.
Thank you. Brandy?
I do not have an update. We did have communications this morning, this afternoon, but I missed it. So I'm so sorry. That's all.
Kristy?
I had planning and I think I had governance, maybe? That's next, this week. I don't, I remember, I just sit at my computer a lot with Zoom calls. So I know I did lead a planning committee meeting.
Yes, you did. Very good. David?
I think since we last talked, we've had a negotiations committee meeting and I as well was, had to miss a communications committee meeting today.
Jennifer?
I attended negotiations, planning, and communications. Health insurance, I was just looking for next month, oh, the 16th. And I'm not entirely burnt out yet on Zoom. There are some advantages to being in your own office and transitioning from one job to the next via Zoom with no drive time. But otherwise, the other thing on my list was to just really take a moment to recognize again, and as we did earlier, all of those, all of the community members, parents, students, that, that we heard from via email around graduation and other things, you know, within the past several years or, it, it's important to recognize that we encourage, I think, citizens to participate in that conversation. And although we can't always provide a timely response just due to volume, just to take this opportunity to say thank you for reaching out. And, and I'm glad that people do do that and feel like they can.
Thank you. John?
As others have noted, we had a negotiations meeting last week. We're going to meet again the 17th of June. I was at communications and I just want to take a moment to thank all of our teachers and our staff that have student contact. It's been quite a year. Recognize what extraordinary circumstances there were as schools wrapping up this week and what amazing job you've all done. I've, I've seen schools going above and beyond trying to have some sort of a transition for fifth graders going to middle schools, eighth graders going to high schools. I know it's going to be a lot of our, our teachers and staff that are going to be missing out on attending graduation as well as our parents and being able to be part of that transition. I just wanted to recognize that and say thank you.
Rebecca?
All right, communications did meet today. Our next meeting will be June 16th at noon. Hopefully we'll all be able to make it to that one. What I'm hoping is that on June 9th, that we'll have some discussion at our board meeting regarding the communications committee and some, looks like some potential changes to GP 7. So looking at discussing that when we're doing our board meeting agenda planning, when we have our governance committee meeting later this week. We had a good meeting today, made some good progress on the purpose and the means of the committee. I was also at negotiations last week and observed at planning last week. Governance is this week. There still aren't any meetings for the Native American Commission. And I think we're, I think the core neighborhood steering committee is, is planning to still meet in June, but I haven't heard for sure. As we're talking about graduation ceremonies, I just happened to be looking through the newsletter from NDSBA, the May newsletter. And it's, it's kind of fun. It says here that there will be a statewide virtual graduation ceremony held May 30th that Superintendent Basler announced. May 30th, 2:00 PM Central Time, carried by the in-forum and broadcast on ABC affiliates in North Dakota. I don't know if it's, I would imagine it would be accessible later for people that can't watch it at that time. So it talks about that there will be remarks from Governor Burgum, a musical performance by Nashville recording artists, Tiger Lily, and some special speakers that will be presenting. So it's kind of a nice, nice treat for our students, hopefully. And that's my report.
Thank you. Jim?
Nothing to report. I was at planning. Obviously, we got a couple more meetings this week. And I just want to echo John's thanks to all of our staff, teachers, administrators, support staff, paras, buildings and grounds. It's, they all deserve a great big hug when our six-foot distancing rule is done.
Agreed. Thank you. President's report, we, I attended planning as well. Fargo Cast Public Health is meeting for the first time. They did move their meeting date, so it is tomorrow, no, Thursday at noon, and it's a Zoom meeting. Governance does meet Zoom, via Zoom on Thursday morning at 7:30. And I had a blast. President Mastred reached out and requested that we participate in their video. So I appreciate that opportunity. And I did notice that one, a teacher named Patrick Healy was my teacher as seventh grade at Ben Franklin. So either I'm really young or he's really old. But he's a great guy. You had him too, Brandy. So, but I remember him very well. So that's a great example of how much, what an impact our, our teachers can make on our lives and we don't ever forget. So thank you for that opportunity. That was, that was great, quite an honor. I believe that is all I have and there is nothing else left on the agenda. So our next regular meeting is June 9th. We haven't decided in which format yet. But who knows? Because things change by the hour, don't they? So we'll hold to see you all by June 9th, if not sooner. Have a good evening.